Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Abdulla?
Here.
Bill Bazey?
Here.
Robert Constant?
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Here.
Denise Melonowski Maxwell?
Here.
Ray Muscat?
Here.
Tom Wenzel?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Angela Vanegas to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, next item on the agenda is Agenda Approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the Order of Business, January 22nd, 2019, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
I request to remove item 9B from the agenda. And the reason why, I mean, I was honored that Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton asked me to be on a chair or be the alternate. But it was brought to my attention that by four council members, that Councilman Constant, I guess he has an issue with me being on this. So, I mean, I respectfully ask to be removed and to put on the agenda at the next meeting so have somebody else a chance to do it. I mean, thank you. I appreciate it. It was, I'm honored that you asked me to do that, but I respectfully request to be removed.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant?
Just a little background. So, years ago, I was the delegate and the alternate. And Janet Battle, who for a time was a delegate, we didn't have any problem. But the only thing I want to, point I want to make is this. This is supposed to be a discussion amongst the council, who's going to be the delegate and not an alternate. So, Councilwoman Clayton is now the delegate, but it's not, it's not her pick. It's really the council chairs pick our suggestion, but it's supposed to be a discussion. I was surprised when I saw that on the agenda and Councilwoman Clayton had not said anything to me.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I don't have a problem pulling it, but I think there, in the very least, let's take it to study session maybe, because with this, it's actually the council body that makes the decision and votes on the delegate and the alternate. And with that being said, I mean, I did call council members and talk with them and Councilman Constant, I did call you as well, and of course, please don't shake your head.
You called me the day it came out.
So, we need to talk, we're happy to talk about that, but I don't want it elevating as it has. I think that's unprofessional and unnecessary, because I shared with you, as well as others, what my concern was, is if I as delegate, though I go to almost all, everything, and I have the records from SimCog of that attendance and everyone's attendance, it's important and imperative that we have somebody who can go if I'm not able to make it. So, we need to discuss it, as I thought we had done, but we can do it through a study session, make it a public meeting, bring forward whatever the backup is needed and warranted so we can have a discussion.
Council Chair.
Councilman Bazey? Okay, let's not get into this.
Again, you know, I was very honored that you asked me, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, and, but again, you know, I don't want to put the good council members in a compromising position, have to vote, you know, based on the calls that I've gotten the last two days from four different council members. And thank you. I appreciate the thought.
Madam Chair. Let me see, I don't have any problem with Councilman Bazey being the alternate, but again, it's not Councilwoman Clayton's pick, it's the council's pick, and there should be some discussion beforehand.
That is what I said, sir.
Okay. At this point, that we will move on. Well, I'm not done yet, because I need to remove 8A, Reports from the Mayor for the WDHT Cable Studio. The mayor and I regularly meet to schedule study sessions, and for some reason, this got beyond us and we didn't schedule it, so we both agreed to remove it and reschedule it to a study session, right, Mayor?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, because I don't know how that got, I mean, we scheduled everything else, and for some reason, we didn't schedule that. Also too, I'd like to remove the following items, because the person we need the information from is not here. Let's see what we got here. Whoops. Okay, nope, I've got it here. We're going to be removing 7A and 7C, 9J, 9K, and 9L. And under Fund Transfers and Current Claims, we're going to remove 6-2, 6-3, 6-4, 6-5, 6-6, 6-7, 6-8, 6-9, 6-10, 6-12, 6-13, 6-14, 6-15, 6-18, 6-23, 6-24, 6-33, 6-34, 6-35, 6-36, and 6-38. Like I said, the person that I had requested to come here and answer some of the questions was not able to make it, so we'll have to reschedule that for another time.
Oh, Madam Chair. As I'm the maker of the motion, we need support by the second person. I would amend my motion to include the items that you have just stated, all the removal that you had listed. You have that for record?
Sure.
Do you have it over here?
Okay, second by Councilman Bazey.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. We have you read it back?
I'd like to clarify, what is being removed?
Sure.
7A, 7C, 8A, 9B.
9J.
9B also.
Oh, and 9B.
Yeah, sorry.
9B, 9J, 9K, 9L. And the Fund Transfers and Claims?
Right.
2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10.
Correct.
12, 13, 14, 15.
Correct.
18. 23, 24, 33, 34, 35, 36, 38.
Correct. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Mayor?
Mr. Zimmer will be retiring at the end of the month, and this is not affecting him in the least, but is detrimental to the operation of the city. I would ask all of you to reconsider this.
I understand that it is part of the city, but he is also currently an employee. He is currently driving the city vehicle, so he's still on the payroll, and he's the only one that can answer these, and I, this is my second request in an email, asking him to please show to a council meeting. He has not shown in months. And that is in the charter, that if we require him to come to a council meeting, he is to come to a council meeting. And I didn't say anything last month, but this month, he didn't show, again, he didn't even send me an email back in regards to that.
Now, my understanding, well, my secretary's not here, but I got a copy of a thing, but...
Yeah, because I checked before I just came to our closed study session at 6:00, before I left my house, and there was nothing in my email.
There wasn't, I was linked in as a part of an email, I don't know who else was on there, but I know there was a bunch of people on there, in regards to him being sick and, I mean, it's a little bit more difficult for him to make it.
Okay, well, we can reschedule this when he can show and answer the questions. That's no problem.
He won't, by the time you have your next meeting, he will not be employed. The reason that I kept him on after January 1st is there's certain licenses that he has that we don't have anybody else in the department that has, and are needed a signature for these reports. So, I asked him to stay on for the additional month to get those reports signed.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Madam Chair, because you've made more than one request for this, and it's been a while, and I understand Director Zimmer is going to retire at the end of the month, can we do a special meeting? I'm good with a special meeting.
I don't have a problem with that either, if he wants...
I told you next Tuesday, I had indicated I will not be here, so I would ask you not have it on Tuesday.
Well, yeah, I knew that. I mean, because this is, this is actually the third attempt I've contacted him since last fall, and that he was an employee with no problems at that point.
Well, in a memo to all of you, because I've been interviewing, I have in mind someone to replace Mr. Zimmer, and I would think that he'll be the one to respond to all these items.
Well, because, like I said, in the past, I know he's sent somebody in his place, and I understand that, but they were not able to answer the questions that we have. So, whoever he chooses as his replacement, he might want to brief him and bring him up...
He'll choose his replacement.
I'm sorry, whoever replaces him, he might want to brief him on what, go ahead, Councilman Muscat.
I really would like you to reconsider 7A, though. That is a contract for the sewer cleaning with a brand-new company.
Okay, well, I will...
That we did, you know, we let someone stay on for an additional to the end of January. This is something I think that we really need to have.
I agree on that. No, let's do the, let's strike the 7A.
7A, I think she stayed back on.
And Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, would you?
Absolutely. That's good.
And you, second of Baz. Go ahead.
Just a question, and I'm sure if it's the mayor that can answer this for us, or maybe Mr. Blackburn, but in terms of some of the contractors that do need to be paid on this, how does that work? I mean, you know, delaying them a month, three weeks, or four weeks, or whatever it happens to be, obviously, we can't pay them without the city council's approval.
Correct.
And I'm just wondering out loud here is if that's fair to them too, at the same time?
Well, we had agreed to do a special meeting that Mr. Zimmer could attend.
Okay.
If it's, you know, in a few days or next week, we can do it. We're not delaying them forever. We just have questions.
I'm saying it's not fair to the contractors, because they have nothing to do with this, either way.
But, yeah, he needs to be responsible too, for what he's put in. So, at this point, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Constant is opposed. Next item on the agenda is the Approval of the Minutes. This is the minutes from the regular meeting of January 8th, 2019.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdulla?
I move that we approve the minutes from January 8th, 2019, at the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, as outlined in item 4A.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, if I might?
Mayor?
I don't mean to be an impediment to the agenda. On motion 19008, which had to do with, interestingly enough, the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, I think, sorry, Joe, this was bid out, and it is under HUD regulations every five years, and this, so this impediment to fair housing choice was bid out, and this is actually 10,000 or 15,000 dollars less than what McKenna did it for the last time. So, my question is, how do we get this back on the agenda?
Wait a minute. Who was it signed by? Was it signed by Zimmer?
No, it didn't pass when that, when that motion was made on the last meeting, it did not pass.
Okay.
But one of the things that was discussed, Mr. Mayor, at the time, as I recall, to best of my recollection, was some of the council members want to see additional options at the time, you know, as far as like different companies that can do this, and then make a decision as far as who we're going to go with.
But what I was trying to tell you is that it was, Joe, you can explain it better than I can.
Go ahead, Mr. Director Hashem?
Good afternoon, Council Chair. This is what you and I met about, and I did show you the contracts that we have with Waitrim that was bidded out about three, four and a half years ago, for five years. I also showed you the previous report that we have done, which was in the $23,000 range, and Waitrim had agreed to do this for 15,000, and I did give you the supporting documents. I think that's what the mayor is referring to.
Yeah, we already bid it out, and they were a little bitter.
And you said because of it being a HUD issue, that the contracts have a different kind of expiration date?
Five years, yes.
Right.
You and I talked about that when we met.
So, how would the council feel about that?
We can add it to the special session, since we're having another one.
We can put it in a special session.
What made it so unusual was that it passed, and then at the end of the meeting, one of your members changed his vote, but I think it was changed under the assumption it had not been bid out, and it has been bid out.
I mean, we haven't seen a bid sheet. I mean, where's the...
Council Chair?
All right, let's just put it in the special meeting, and you'll provide the bids sheets, right? That'd be perfect.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, so then, there's no amendment to the motion, because there was no change. Correct.
Okay, next, we have Public Hearings and Comment on Agenda Items. Please come up to the microphone, limit yourself to two minutes, state your name and address.
Madam Chair, I don't believe you voted on that last motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, under the Approval of the Minutes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Sorry about that. Next item on the agenda is Public Hearing and Comment on Agenda Items.
Madam Chair. Do I state my name?
Your name and your address, yes.
Chrissy Lazlo, on Charlesworth Street. Council pulled a couple of agenda items, assuming that they were...
This is on agenda-only items, and they're no longer on the agenda, so that would not apply.
Well, they're my items, though. They're not Zimmer's.
Oh.
14 and 35 are my items.
Okay.
I know what the cover page says, but if you actually look in the document, it's my signature, and it's something that's always been done by me.
But we can't, we don't do this on current claims.
No.
This form is not for current claims.
No, we can't do that. It's pulled because it was Zimmer's signature, you're, you know...
It's not his signature.
You put a signature on there? That's what you're saying?
I have my signature on the actual bill, on both of those.
The authorized, on 14, the authorized official was Zimmer.
That's not his signature either. That was a mistake by the comptroller's office.
Okay, because, yeah, the authorized official is Zimmer. I do not, on 6-14, your signature's not on here.
It's on the actual invoice.
Right, but it's not on the Current Claims Voucher Approval, which is the approval...
Point of order, this is for, current claims are not part of this...
Correct. Okay, at this point...
It's only for agenda items that are not part of current claims.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Okay. Any other comments on agenda items? Okay, next item on the agenda is Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move council approve Agenda Item 61 through 640, with the omissions stated earlier as outlined in six... Item 6.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
So, whenever this comes back, we need clarification on item 68. So, whoever comes at the special meeting says tree service, $11,125. And again, you know, we were, we discussed this before. We were told that the city or DPW prefers to do tree service than grass, so we need clarification for the special session. And the second item...
It's not on the agenda anymore.
No, I understand, but we...
It's not on the agenda anymore.
We can't discuss it.
It's not on the agenda.
Well, we'll discuss it at the next meeting then.
Yes, we will, definitely. Okay. Is there any further discussion on Fund Transfers and Current Claims? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have, under consideration of bids, we have Park and Recreation Deputy Director Constant. That's to advertise for bids, replacement of the floor-mounted overhead-braced metal partitions for Richard A. Young...
7A. 7A. No, 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 they put it back on.
I'm sorry, we did put 7A back on, because I have it, I have it crossed out here. Yeah, 7A, I put, okay, I didn't. Okay, we have Public Service Administrator Zimmer, contract award to sanitary sewer cleaning and television inspection services.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move council approve the service agreement for sewer cleaning and television inspection from February 1, 2019, through January 31, 2023, to be awarded to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services in a total amount bid of $1,481,885. We also recommend that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign a service agreement on behalf of the city, as outlined in 7A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdulla. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair. Council Chair. Just to clarify, you should also approve the service agreement. You said approve the bid.
Oh, I'm sorry, to approve the service, to approve the contract. And the bid and the contract. And have the mayor and clerk sign it.
Okay, Councilman Abdulla seconds it. Is there any discussion? Councilman Abdulla?
So, I, I guess it'd be for Mr. Blackburn. I had a question, if you don't mind. Two things, and it actually may even be for Council Gary, so I'm not sure, it depends on who wants to answer this. Number one, I went through the contract, and I know the amounts are written on there on the outside, on the main cover page, but in the contract, there's nowhere in there specifically the amount of the bids for each year, be it, for example, 402,000, 377,000 for 2020, et cetera. Is that going to be eventually, and I'm not sure, it may be Council Gary that answers this, is that going to eventually be incorporated, or...
It's incorporated by reference. If you actually look at the contract documents, page 1, 1.2, contract documents, it makes reference to all these, the bid specification, as well as their completed proposal, which contained all of this information.
So, you have...
That's what I was informed of by Mr. Brooks.
Okay, so just, well, there was nothing attached with ours. Okay, just wanted to make sure it was addressed. No problem. And the second question I had, it might be for Mr. Blackburn, just in case, the amounts, I looked at it, 2019 was 402,000, and then it goes down from there all the way down to 2022, which is the last year of the service contract, which is 348,000 with a difference of around $54,000. Was there a reason behind that? Why, I mean, that's good, that's dropping, but then there's a reversal of that question, then why is it so high this coming year?
Well, the way it's done is, the city has to be cleaned, every line has to be cleaned within a five-year period. So, the higher amount might be, there's, there's more sewer lines in that one year compared to lines in the other years, as far as getting cleaned, because the contract is per foot. So, when there is a, the first year, they're going to clean more lines, there's more lines in that area than there are in the other areas throughout the other years.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
On that note, for 7A, we have, right now, 11 months in 2019 for 402,600. So, you're charged, they're charging us $402,000 in 2019 for 11 months, and 2020, $377,000, and yet, we have Pipeline, who's under contract with Nego, did the work for the whole entire month of January, and they're still charging us for that month, so why, why are we being charged a higher amount for 11 months?
Council Miyaki?
Yes, under page 2, 2.2 Adjusted Schedule, we've adjusted the schedule that would otherwise be reflected in the schedule that's been in the document that you have. Again, they will only be billing, and Mr. Brooks could correct me if I'm wrong, since I relied on him, and they'll only be billing based on the actual work that's done, and the schedule will be pushed back because of, it's them starting one month late.
They had on Article 3, because that was the first thing I thought about too, but on Article 3, what they did, they put, this agreement shall commence on February 1st, 2019, and show, basically, end on January 31st, 2023, which means, henceforward, it's going to be February 1st to the next February.
Right, everything was adjusted in terms of the schedule. That was one of the things we had to do, so...
Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under consideration of bids, we have Park and Recreation Deputy Director Constant, advertise for bids for replacement of the floor-mounted overhead-braced metal partitions for Richard A. Young Center's lobby restrooms.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to concur with Parks and Recreation Deputy Director Kim Constant, and authorize the comptroller to advertise for bids for replacement of the floor-mounted metal partitions for Richard A. Young Center's lobby restrooms, per the attached specifications outlined in 7B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdulla. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under Report from City Officials, Treasurer Riley Investment of Funds Report for December 31st, 2018.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I'm sorry, we're on, I'm sorry.
9A.
No, 9A, we removed that, for the mayor and me, remember?
9A is John Riley's report. Yes, so we're on 9A, correct?
Yes.
We removed 8A.
We removed, yeah.
Oh, did I say 9?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Okay, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, it is 9A, Treasurer Riley Investment of Funds Report for December 31st, 2018.
All right, Madam Chair, I have a quick, quick question before I make the motion, because when I make the motion, it's a receive, note, and file, or we can discuss it after, once we vote on it, a receive, note, and files, and action. So, Madam Chair, I move we receive, note, and file the Investment of Funds Report for December 31st, 2018, as outlined in 9A.
Okay.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat.
Madam Chair.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, thank you. And thank you, Treasurer Riley.
Chair.
I have a question. My question is, and you give these to us on a regular basis, quarterly, I believe, and this is good, but my question is, does it behoove us to, as a city, if we take the restricted funds that are included in here, that'd be like the Act 345, the pig money, sanitary, public safety, and the over taxation or over capture taxes on CSO, and have them invested separately, since they are restricted, and for transparency's sake, would we not do that, to avoid any co-mingling of funds or perception of such?
That's not my decision. The general fund monies are all one pool of general fund monies. They're not set up in the treasurer's office as separate funds. That's an accounting mechanism that has set that up, Councilwoman.
Follow-up question, Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Because those are restricted funds that I just mentioned, and we're all very familiar with that, and because of the Plant Moran Audit, and the co-mingling, and the separation of those, and like, for example, I'm going to use Act 345, that we've been talking about since, I don't know, it's been six or seven months, we're supposed to do a separate 115 trust fund, that's what was recommended, suggested, we're supposed to be moving towards. That's my line of questioning and thinking, because you said it's all in this general fund, but that's...
Well, these funds are invested under Public Act 20. When we switch over to putting monies into a, to a trust fund, we'll be able to invest those in a different manner, like we do pension fund assets. At that point, it would make sense to separate them, in the sense that we could invest in assets that could get us a better return. Okay, but these assets, they're better to be co-mingled, because if I buy a small investment, I would get a lower rate of return than if I have investments that are co-mingled and a large, and get a better rate of return, because, you know, economies of scale. So, but when you get to the 115, you're going to be separating the assets, which will be, allow them to be invested under a different act.
And they have a higher yield, correct? That's my, what I've been informed by financial advisors, that something like the trust fund, if you invest it separately, there are higher yields.
Well, with the pension funds, some years, we have, you know, very large returns, but then you also have the risk of having down years, and the equity markets go up and down. You definitely wouldn't want to invest any of your city's operating funds, whether they're restricted or not restricted, into assets that would go down. Our number one thing is to protection of principle on these assets, because we have Our number one thing is to protection of principle on these assets, because we have bills to pay, okay? And so, we don't want to put them at risk. I put the protection of principle above even the rate of return that I get on these assets, because the worst thing we want to do is lose money.
Right, absolutely. All right, thank you.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
One question, Mr. Riley, if you can, please.
Sure, Councilman.
On the back, last page, escrow, combo CD Flagstar Bank. I mean, those are invested, too, escrow accounts?
Yes. So if you look at that, when I say combo CD, like I was mentioning to the councilwoman, so we have, we've co-mingled a few of these together into a combo CDs to make the investment larger, so we could get a better rate of return. The banks give us a smaller rate of return on a smaller CD, so rather than saying I put, you know, put this one, you know, a small amount of investment, and this a small amount of investment, and this a small amount of investment, then.
And I understand that part, but when I see escrow, I'm saying, well, that's something that we have to pay out right away. That's something that we're saving to pay out, correct?
Right. But we, so we have an investment, we have a checking account of escrow, which is, has available funds, which isn't shown on the investment account, for us to pay, pay out money that needs to be. But then, for the longer term, the escrow money, we invest part of it so that we get a return on it.
Does that come out of the general fund, that the money that goes into the escrow?
No, the general fund, no. The general fund is listed strictly on page, page 2, or you can see what says Corporate Fund, General Fund. Those assets that are part of the general fund are listed there. Then you see the school taxes, which are basically money that we collect, but then we turn around and pay out as we collect them to the schools, the county, whatever monies that we're collecting for. Further down, you see the, you know, major streets, local streets, library funds, confiscated drugs, building authority, you know, there's the water and sewer fund, and then later we have some, some of the escrow accounts that you were referring to.
Okay. I just didn't know where the escrow money comes from.
Yeah. So again, it's, it's like it's money, you say, that people put in hand, but we would have to pay back, but we have some checking of money available to pay that money back, and if we needed to pull this money out, we could do that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, under reports from city officials, we have Administrative Assistant Laslow, abatement and demolition for the structures on and restoration of the property at 24046 Hanover, 24058 Hanover, and 24066 Hanover.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Administrative Assistant Christina Laslow. City of Duvern Heights saw out bids for demolition of a total of five homes on Hanover Street, two bids in late, threw two bids in 2016. This particular company, McMillan, was the lowest bidder, and McMillan Group has been asked to provide another quote for the abatement and demolition for the structures for the properties at 24046 Hanover, 24058, 24066 Hanover. They provided quotes for 24046 Hanover in an amount of 16,356. The next one, 058, an amount of 13,406, and 24066, an amount of 20,613. We have attached proposals here, and Christina Laslow, Administrative Assistant, is asking our body to approve the attached contract for the abatement and demolition of the structures for those above-mentioned properties in an amount not to exceed 50,375, as outlined in item 9C.
I'm going to support that, so I can.
Support by Councilman Muscat?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey, or Councilman Muscat first.
We only have one bid here. Our charter tells us over 5K, we have to go out for bid. Just because these people were the lowest bidder before doesn't make them the lowest bidder this time. We must go out for bid. The only reason I'm supporting this is so we can make this perfectly clear.
Administratives.
We need other bids for this. We just can't arbitrarily give it to someone who's been doing all the demolition in the city, just because they were the lowest bid last time and the time before last.
Okay. Administrative Assistant Laslow?
Yes, per the grant, they have this until the end of the grant. They couldn't go and give an estimate in every single house at that time, because not every, or every single homeowner would have to say that they wanted to sell or not to sell. We have 90 days to take the homes down from time of purchase. We got extensions to get them in little blocks, so they get down quicker. Why I put that paragraph in there was to explain to the newer members, just, it's the same paragraph I put in, I think it was in August, just to explain to the newer members, this is why we're going. These are the last homes. There's another grant, a 2016 grant. We're still working with the state and FEMA on that one, but once that goes through, that'll go out for bid again. This is for that grant.
This is for the same grant that was previewed from the time before.
The 2014 grant.
Okay, that, that I will.
Understand.
Understand it better that way, because it just seemed like it was a new.
Oh, yeah, no, no. And per the new grant, it's actually going to have to follow HUD guidelines. This follows the 2013 guidelines, so.
All right, thank you very kindly for the explanation.
Thank you. Councilman Bazey?
Okay, I have three items on this, on 9C. The first, first item, we show the first property, 24066, that's, that's city property, but 24046 and 24058 still registered under the actual owners who is occupying the building or the house, the two homes. How come these two homes are still not registered to the city?
It's registered.
I didn't see that one last time I looked.
All the paperwork are there?
I looked this morning, I didn't see it.
Well, if you're looking on the BSNA, or are you looking at the county?
County.
Sometimes it takes up to 90 days or even six months for there, but all the paperwork was filed.
Okay, this.
And I have all the paperwork in my office, and if you like, I can actually email it to you.
Okay.
And if you ask me before that, I could actually send that to you before tonight, too, as soon as you ask me.
Okay, I'd like to get that, please, because I think we approved these homes back in August, so it's more than 90 days.
They closed in October, end of October and early October.
Okay, thank you. So the second item, I was actually told, I've seen pictures of the demolition of the last homes on Hanover. Whoever entered the house, I mean, they had an excavator outside, they pretty much went from the top down. There was no protective gear, like, say, if there's asbestos and lead, lead paint. Obviously, these homes were built prior to the dates, when they banned asbestos or the lead paint. And we haven't seen a report, and the residents were concerned that there was nothing done. They just went demolished the home, and asbestos and lead paint is in the air.
Again, that's for, oh, sorry, I'll let you finish.
Okay, their kids are playing outside on top and near the property, and so we need to, the council, I think, just to make the residents be comfortable for the health and safety, we need to see the, some type of asbestos or lead paint report.
Again, as I, as I mentioned to council in the past, I used to give that to council, and it's about 300 pages. Why those are varying prices is because of that removal. There's a separate company that comes in, Minority Veteran Women's, that actually does the abatement. I mentioned this to council before, if you want that, I can provide that.
I'd like to get that, please.
But if you asked me that before, you can actually have it before you vote on it, and I can provide that. I don't provide it, because it was, it was actually being a whole separate email and sometimes drowning out hundreds, sometimes, of pages.
Okay.
It is being done, though, and anybody that spoke to you about it, if you tell me the address, I can tell you exactly when it was done, because the state of Michigan actually monitors that as well.
So how much do we pay for that company to go in there and test for asbestos?
Performance Environmental, it varies, but we also went out for bid for them.
I'm sorry, how much did we pay for these, for these three homes?
Around $700 apiece, but it varies. It varies how much testing they have to do. It was all in their bed that they did for this contract, too.
Okay, I'd like to get that report, please, because, like I said, you know, I've gotten a few calls from residents. I went, visited the site, and they showed me pictures that they just went in, demolished, there was nothing.
No, that didn't happen. The demolition company comes in and demolish after the abatement company comes in and abates the area.
Okay, I understand, but the residents that I.
State of Michigan approved it, and we also have pictures, and the state of Michigan is actually on site when that happens.
Okay.
They're required. It's not, it.
Okay.
I understand, but I'd like to get.
All right, thank you.
Okay, my last item, the homes that we purchased on Hanover and Madison, I have a list here, so I'd like to get the appraisals, please, just so I can go over them.
Sure.
Okay, I have a copy. I don't know if I should want to the mayor or want to you. Is there where I can get a copy next day or so?
I can't get it to you tomorrow. I can get it to you probably by Thursday or Friday.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Abdullah?
Chrissy, just a quick question. From my recollection, and I hope I'm wrong, but did we not have an issue with McMillan? Was there, I don't remember what it was, and I'm just trying to go by my recollection.
No.
We didn't have no situation where we had to deal with a year or so ago, unless I have the companies mixed up, but I thought it was this one.
No, there was, there was something brought up by another one of the Nat low bidders about a different McMillan in a different state that there was an issue with, and they tried to make that, but there was no issues with McMillan.
Okay, maybe that's what I'm referencing.
McMillan itself actually went through.
I remember some stuff about it.
It was dirty, but no, they passed it. They're also on, they're also in the federal on programs now, too, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel back there, I'm sorry, I forgot about you.
I have a question for maybe Dan Brooks or Chrissy. Have they ever done any, any testing on the soil that they fill in the basements with? Because I've walked the property a few weeks ago, no, and there was some serious debris in that soil. Do we, do we test that soil, being right next to the creek?
We, the soil that we bring to backfill is actually fill dirt. It's actually got from a certain area. It's not just taken from other areas. You can't do that. I guess if there's other things in the soil, per the grant, we can't disturb the soil. We're not allowed to dig down, we're not allowed to build a basin, we're not allowed to build up. We just fill with dirt. So anything that was there previously is still there. Does that answer, or, I guess I don't understand your question.
Do they test that soil that they bring in? Because it's got a lot of debris in it, pieces of pipe, I don't even know if it's lead pipe, I was walking around, pieces of ceramic piping, all kinds of, piece of mellow.
Yeah, that's not, that could be the dumping that's happening. That's not theirs. They actually brought in fill dirt.
We're hearing a lot of people dump, in that area, dumping some of their waste from their own properties over there. We're getting people that are doing that regularly, so, sports, I guess, not what's happening.
Okay.
We're being on the watershed steward commission, we're concerned about the creek and the, the effects that this thou vacant property has on draining off into the creek, and making sure that all the material that's put in there is safe material for the residents.
We actually spoke to Barb Gaurica about it, and that's something we're planning on honoring Steve Roberts with. Everything that's being in there are plants that filter the water, so unlike it was before when there's homes, this water will actually be filtered, like the Henry Ford homes were up in River Oaks. It's actually be a new system. It'll be clean water that's going back into the creek, not surface water.
Okay.
So you're saying there wasn't any tests done on that soil?
It's, Councilwoman Wenzel, it's fill dirt. You get it from, you can't just get fill dirt anywhere. You get it, do you know the name of companies offhand? There's a couple downriver. You actually go, and it's dirt that you use to fill. The DPW is the same thing, does, I know Bowles trucks it in, but it's clean dirt. It's not, it's not mixed, it's not allowed to be.
Well, we had this issue of fill dirt over there by Bellagio, that was a real big situation.
The Bellagio is a separate company that chose to put fill dirt in before it was approved to bring up something to an elevation. We are filling in a basement. The fill dirt itself wasn't the issue that you seem to have. The fill dirt, the Bellagio was because the elevation was higher. Our fill dirt is, they're both fill dirt, but the fill dirt is clean dirt. It doesn't need to be tested. It's tested before.
The Michigan State Department of Agriculture, and they're, they're willing to come out and do a free soil sample of that area for us.
That's, that's great. That's, that's.
I think this is a very good idea. All right, any further discussion? Okay, at this point, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Bazey is opposed. Next item, under reports from city officials, we have Corporation Counsel Miyaki Attorney Invoice Questions.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move that city council approve the payment of $20, $27 for item A on 9D. This was a misprint that said Faqee versus West Bloomfield. It was really Faqee versus Dearborn Heights, as per outlined on 9D.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried. Next item on the agenda is Fire Chief Brogan to authorize payment for fire truck.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Move to concur with Fire Chief David Brogan and approve the final payment for the fire truck as listed in 9E upon delivery.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I got a question for the mayor. Okay, so I know we talked about borrowing the money, and you mentioned at one of the meetings back in August that we have all this money, so why, why aren't we paying it from that fund instead of paying that amount over all these years with interest?
Because a significant aspect of financial management of a community is cash flow, and using $726,000 of cash flow would mean that we wouldn't be able to pay our bills. So consequently, we financed this over three years, and we do that with other large purchases in order to honor and have enough cash on hand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, agenda is Library Director McCaffrey, Library Advisory Board Appointments.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move we concur with our Library Director Mike McCafferty and approve the reappointments to the Library Advisory Board as outlined in 9F, and appoint Councilman Tom Wenzel as the council liaison to the library board.
Second.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, Park and Recreation Deputy Director Constant, that's Parkland Park ADA restroom project pay application number eight, the final remaining balance.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move that council approve the enclosed payment application number eight, final, with the remaining balance of the Parkland Park ADA restroom project, an authorized payment to Sidroni Associates Incorporated, as out at, in the amount of $6,358.25, as outlined in 9G.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion?
This closes the book on this, correct?
Madam Chair, I was just going to mention that, Councilman Muscat asked about the last payment. I figured, let's get this done the next meeting. This is it.
Okay.
Book is closed.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
That restroom, I was told, I haven't visited the site in probably a couple weeks, but I was told this morning that there's some issues with lighting, and I'm sure you've seen the email, mayor, you were CC'd on it. Is there any status on the lighting outside that restroom? I know we paid a lot of money, and we still got issues with lighting.
The lighting was taken care of.[1662.48] In fact, Mr. Blackburn responded to it the very next day after the email was received, if not the same day.
Okay, so that's been taken care of, Director?
The lighting's been taken care of, we just had to adjust the timer on it.
Okay, perfect. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Parks and Recreation Deputy Director Constant, disposal of desk and workbench.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to concur with Parks and Recreation Deputy Director Kim Constant, and move, we approve the request to dispose of the old metal desk and old metal workbench at the Eaton Senior Center as outlined in 9H.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Deputy Director Constant, disposal of old heavy tables.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, Kim Constant, requesting disposal of the following old and very heavy tables at the Berwin Senior Center. Eighteen eight-foot super-large heavy tables, three four-foot heavy tables, five six-foot heavy tables, one broken round table, and six eight-foot heavy tables as outlined in item 9I.
Second.
Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, just a quick question for Deputy Director Constant. Are these tables are something that can be donated, like to maybe churches or Salvation Army that might have a need?
Yes, definitely. There are a few that are broken. Obviously, they probably wouldn't be interested in those, but there are a few that are in halfway decent shape, but they are like your, like real old heavy ones where you need actually like sometimes two to three people to lift.
Have you already found placement for them, or will you just?
Not yet, I wanted to get the approval to dispose of them first. So we will look for recycling options first.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under ordinances and resolutions, we have Councilman Bazey, smoking lounges and facilities resolution.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I move the council to adopt this moratorium on smoking lounges and facilities. The council finds it necessary to research the development of consistent cohesive and objective land use, development and regulatory standards applicable to facilities and establishments commonly described as tobacco retail specialty stores, cigar bars, zero percent nicotine establishments, hookah lounges and bars, and other smoking facilities by any other name that may desire to operate within the city of Dearborn Heights. City council shall study the need for regulations and ordinances on smoking lounges and facilities. This moratorium is hereby declared effective immediately for the consideration of the application to open or the opening of any tobacco retail specialty stores, cigar bars, zero percent nicotine establishments, hookah lounges, and bars, or other smoking facilities for a period of one-hundred-and-eighty days from the date here of effective January twenty-second, 2019, as outlined in 11A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
This is something that's probably gonna be imperative for us to have a study session and come up with some sort of ordinances like other communities have done in the past. Dino Dearborn just had, had this moratorium and ordinance done, and many communities have done this. So I think it would be our best interest to set up a study session and a walk with this.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Again, you know, the reason why I wrote this moratorium is because of all these issues that surrounding communities. I've been doing research on this for the last six, seven months. There's a lot of cities and states that actually have issues with shootings, and if they don't have a, any type of regulation or ordinances in the books, it leaves any, anybody to come in and open a facility, and then our police has to worry about the law enforcement.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna add to the conversation briefly that several years ago, I served with SimCog on the redevelopment of Business Corridor Task Force, and we as a task force developed a toolkit which won a national award. And it, I think it would be great if our economic development department would take a look at using that, cause it's recognized by MEDCC as well. I hope I have those initials correct. And this toolkit helps you identify, you know, what you have and what you're missing in your community. So you're really now maximizing on what your residents would probably like to have that we don't have. And I think that would be great. I've already talked with some Tifa folks, a lot with some of them, not all of them, but along the Van Born corridor as well as our business community, it would not be a bad idea to use this tool. It is available, it is free, and I have it on thumb drive for people.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mayor.
I just wonder, question to our Corporation Council, but is this the right way to do this? What would, what is your recommendation?
Well, here, here's the potential difficulty. I don't know if this would necessarily be something that would be preempted by state law. If it is, then we might end up having a problem with doing the moratorium. I know that Dearborn has done it, and I don't necessarily take for granted that means that it was done appropriately, and that would be my concern. So while it can end up being done, if we do end up having someone who says, look, I wanna apply, you're doing this because you're trying to keep me from being able to operate, there may be a difficulty.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know that it would be.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Council and Council.
So my only issue would be, so the existing cigar bars and hookah lounges would be allowed and continue, but no new. Correct. Yeah, there's a legal issue whether or not the state smoking ban and the exceptions preempts any local ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair. I just wanted to get a clarification. This would also be effective for tobacco stores also, not necessarily where somebody's sitting around, stores included.
Yeah.
Okay.
As it stated, then no.
Right. So, so the only thing that concerns me a little bit is I, I've always been of the opinion, I prefer economics to be able to determine what opens up and what doesn't open up in a particular area, whether something is successful or not. That would be determined more upon economics. In other words, if somebody's not doing well, they're eventually shut down. On the other hand, I do see Councilman Bazey's, you know, concern about potential issues, because I do know some surrounding cities have had some issues with certain establishments. So yeah, it is, it's probably a good idea to probably put together something. The only thing that kinda concerns me is I'm not sure if we're gonna need one-hundred-and-eighty days on that, and I just want to throw that out there. Maybe about one-hundred-and-twenty days might be plenty of time to be able to do this.
One-hundred-and-eighty, up to one-hundred-and-eighty days, and as I stated in the moratorium, unless we get something earlier zoning.
Any further discussion?
Well, okay, but the only thing is, I mean, it does say for, for a period of one-hundred-and-eighty days, so it doesn't say up to, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
We can change that up to if you want, is that okay?
Okay, it says up to here. Let me see, for a period of one-hundred-and-eighty days, or unless, if you read down.
Period of one-hundred-and-eighty days.
It says shall expire automatically upon adoption of an ordinance regulating tobacco retail.
Okay, so it could be done in less time if you adopt something, it will expire.
No problem.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Mark Roberts with Seacrest Wardle, proposed zoning ordinance amendment H-19-01 CX District Drive-Thru Business as Permitted Accessory Use.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Council Mark Roberts with the attached copy of an ordinance, amending the amended, I'm sorry, amendment to amend the zoning ordinance regulations regarding the CX district, specifically section thirty-six ninety-three, which permitted uses by the district. It is proposed to amend the list, drive-thru business as a permitted accessory use in a commercial residential mixed-use district as outlined in item eleven B, and we are being advised that we pass a motion, I'm sorry, we had passed a motion on October ninth, 2018, to approve the plans submitted by CDPA Architects for the Starbucks at two-six-six-one-five-four Road, provided that they have complied with all the conditions of planning and zoning. And thus, in order for the condition to be met, the city council must vote to approve the attached zoning ordinance amendment as outlined in item eleven B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Conston. Council Miaki.
May I suggest that the motion be changed to essentially say to approve ordinance number H-1901 on an emergency basis for the reasons discussed at the meeting, with it to be deemed read both a first and a second time, and to take effect upon publication and newspaper of general circulation as required by law.
I amend, I amend my motion based on what council just said.
I don't agree with it. I don't. I, I think we, cause this is a big thing, and we have some people that are opposed to the CX district. If it was just Starbucks, that's one thing, but we're taking a whole district. This is a whole section, not just one business.
Madam Chair. We could lose Starbucks because they, they thought with the motion that was made last year that they got approval.
That's what was meant by that, but we didn't mean for a whole district to be approved.
We have a motion on the floor and a second.
Okay.
So we have to either, you know, open it up for discussion.
Well, okay, let's open it up for discussion then.
Madam Chair.
Council Chair.
With this being approved, it's still going to be two weeks before it goes into effect. As per your, I mean, you've done this with other ordinances because of your wording of potential, so you.
That is, that is correct. It will still, there's still end up being a delay, but then you're gonna add in another delay.
Going two weeks.
Yeah, but I'm saying it based on what the mayor has indicated.
But I, I understand what you're saying, but we can't just pick and choose which ordinance we're going to do today and then, and another ordinance that we wait two weeks for. It's either gonna be consistent or nothing.
I, I think we should be straight across the board.
On publication, and you sent us an email about an ordinance that was read, and upon publication, it was published, and you had it taken down because of potential of a veto. So we can't, we have to be consistent here. I'm not going to play games here, we either do it one way or the other way.
Councilman, I'm not saying.
Okay, Councilman Bazey.
Also, one of the things, one of my issues is, you know, when we brought this up with another facility, well Dairy Queen, we've had a lot of accidents on that street, and when I brought this up, there's gotta be a solution. And a lot of residents have met, obviously some city officials, but nothing has been done. And there was an accident in the summer, almost a fatality. And I'd asked that question, and the mayor told me it was grandfathered in. So what's gonna prevent the, us, the city, that there's gonna be an accident, whatever facility that opens up, the residents have no say-so where the facility's gonna open? And I've met with at least twenty residents that live off of John Daly Dock State or area, and they all oppose it. So they never, were given the opportunity that, hey, we're gonna do a drive-in right here, and you guys, or drive-through, and you guys have no say-so. So that's one of the things, so there's no, the residents are not involved with these places opening up with a drive-through, and there's a risk of having accidents on Ford Road, you know, with facilities opening up, and what we're gonna do, tell the residents, this was grandfathered in, again, you know, this is, we gotta.
Council Chair, there was, there was an open meeting on this.
Okay, I've got Councilwoman Hicks Clayton next.
You, you, Councilman Bazey took care of that, thank you.
Okay, did Councilman Muscat, did you have something to say?
Yeah, that was, you know, there was an open meeting on this at the zoning board and the planning commission, and everything was approved. So the people were there, I was there, and spoke my piece for whatever it was worth, and, and it was approved. So it was available to the public.
So if I could just say one thing too, Councilman Muscat is correct. There was a, a public hearing, it was opened up for this discussion, folks in that area were invited to come. The way the plans were originally submitted for this particular Starbucks, it was not satisfying the planning consultant or the planning commission. So they had them revise the plans to move the building in a different direction so that would allow up to twenty-one cars in the drive-through. But when you approve this, if you approve this, they still have to get permission, and it still has to be approved by our planning consultant before. So it just, someone just can't automatically open up a drive-through without it being approved by the planning commission, they would, they'd still be up for review, so.
And if I, if I may, what I was.
Council Miaki, please.
Thank you. What I, what I was starting to say with respect to what Councilman Muscat was saying, is that this idea that this would be deemed to be read both a first and a second time is something that's expressly stated in terms of it being published or being treated as being effective with only one reading as opposed to two readings. So that's different than the idea of when it gets published. When it gets published would still have to end up being before the next meeting. And the thing that makes this more complicated is that because it is a zoning ordinance, it actually has to be published in a newspaper of general circulation. It can't be just published on our city website.
Okay, well, I think at this time, we've agreed just to have this as the first reading.
Disagree.
I disagree.
Oh, is, okay, I thought that's what you were saying.
The, the motion was to accept this, there was a second, and now we have to vote on it.
But the motion was for a first reading, it didn't mention first and second.
No, it outlined as AP.
Did it?
Yes. I think it was Councilman Abdullah read that, and it was corrected by Gary Miaki.
Can we speak on this?
Sure. Oh, okay.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
My name is Najim Samwa at Six Park Lane, CDPA Architects. I was here in October. Seems like, unfortunately, I understand where you're coming from, but this particular project seems like it's been a guinea pig for this process you have. It's been in the works for over a year and a half. And yes, it's approved. No, 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 it's not approved. No, no, it's approved, go ahead. So I understand, Councilman Bazey, that the residents are concerned, but we also have a, a property owner that has been suffering quite a bit of delay, you know, in the development of this. So I, forgive me, but I think the council has, is in a position of leadership, is to direct development and to improve the status quo, and this is really complicating it. This is, it's just, this project hasn't been able to go anywhere, and it's unfortunate. I'm not blaming anybody, I'm not pointing a finger at anyone, but my client shouldn't be in this position. There's quite a bit of loss, you know, at his end.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Abdullah.
I, I just wanna point out that, and this is just my opinion, I believe, I mean, obviously we gotta make sure we take care of the residents, absolutely, so we gotta do whatever, we kinda, take whatever precautions, we kinda not create any havoc for them, but at the same time, on Ford Road, which is commercial property, where we want a lot of economic development, we want a lot of national brands to bring in, i.e. Starbucks, and other major brands, and any major brand of a franchise that we want to develop in that main area, which is the entry to Dearborn Heights, national brands are gonna have a drive-through window. And if you don't have a drive-through window, be it Burger King, Tim Hortons, and I go on and on, I'm just using sample names here, they're not gonna wanna open up, no Burger King or whatever other brand will open up where someone's gonna pull up and come down and get their food and get back in and get out, cause they don't make any profits this way. And I know from a lot of individual owners of these types of properties, I don't know these particular owners, but I'm talking about in general, they only make money if there's a drive-through, any, especially a coffee shop, doesn't have a drive-through, just, it's, it's next to impossible to make money. And also, we gotta keep in mind that along Ford Road, if you go from, not even Canton, Canton all the way down Detroit, all along there's residential properties near there, but all along there's drive-through properties, including a coffee shop very near us, Tim Hortons in West Dearborn right near Gully. And, you know, to the best of my knowledge, I don't think there's been any major problems, but at the same time, we do have to take into account the concerns of the residents. But I think personally, we can't stop economic development that is very, very urgent for our city and the tax base.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
You know, when this first was brought up, I, I was against a drive-through when I went to the original meetings, but the way they reconfigured everything, they did a great job on how they moved the driveways around and how it was gonna be. You know, as much as I don't like people coming through to residential areas, I, I don't think this is going to be a problem personally, as I see it.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
I did have something else to add.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
You know, and I agree with you, Councilman, cause I was at one of those meetings with the planning commission, and there were a lot of concerns, but I think the business owner and developer has addressed those things, including the noise, the screen, the safety. That's really important. But I also agree with you, Councilman Abdullah, that we, we need to be an encouraging community, a welcoming community for economic development. Otherwise, they leave, and who else is actually gonna even consider us, thinking, wow, it's taken, it took them a year, a year and a half. Why would we wanna go to Dearborn Heights when it takes so long to get a business open? We don't wanna be labeled as that community. So I agree with you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston.
Well, architect, the issue is the overflow traffic through the drive-through backing Ford Road up. And, you know, this is an issue with car washes, with, it's an issue with our Dairy Queen down Ford Road, and, and it looks like you've got sufficient area for, to prevent any overflow back up on the Ford Road. We could probably also put a sign, no stopping, you know.
They have that on Ford, for Dairy Queen.
We have given on the ingress and egress of the site, if you look, if you review the site plan, you would see that it's controlled with signage. And also, whether we are architects, planners, or whatever, we have a zoning ordinance that requires so many stacking, stacking spaces per drive-through. And if we meet those conditions, then really, it's, we, we met all the obligations that we have to meet. So we do meet all the obligations. There was no variance, there was no exception, so it meets all the regulations. It is just so unfortunate, I think it's a, this building could have been up by now, but I think, again, you know, it's a, I think it's been a guinea pig. a, I think it's been a guinea pig with this. I understand it's a big, it's a big rezoning and what have you.
Sure.
Okay, but I think the council, and, sorry, it's not my business, but there's no reason whatsoever that I submit the plans to the business department on the 23rd of October, okay? Then they lose them in January. I don't understand.
Understandable. Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, I think we're...
Just a quick comment, whatever you could, two-second comment, just, you know, and I understand some of the council people's concern about the Dairy Queen situation. I have very, very serious concerns about the Dairy Queen situation. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but you may want to drive there, especially in the summer. It's definitely a major problem, major havoc.
Of course I am. I live, I live across from it.
Yeah, so whatever can be done to try to eliminate that type of situation is our main preference, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, let's decide what we're going to do. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Bazey and Councilwoman Melanowski Maxwell, no. It is passed.
A point of clarification, so it, it was passed in accordance with the 11B, is that two readings or one?
Yeah, just the way it was submitted.
The way I believe I said it was.
Correct. Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Okay, under new business, we have new business license for Bellagio Banquet LLC, 23900 West Warren.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Madam Chair, move to approve the new business license for Bellagio Banquet LLC, located 23900 West Warren, as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, I'm going to have it for comments from council members. I will start this myself. I would like to say that city council is very sympathetic towards the federal employees who are currently without pay. We have three council members, Bill Bazey, Lisa Hicks Clayton, and Ray Muscat, who are currently working on a solution for that in regards to taxes and water bills. We will be bringing that forward in the future if necessary. Any other comments?
Chair?
Councilman Bazey?
I know Councilman Muscat put in an ordinance, it was, it was passed by the council for the city car markings. I have not, has that been approved or, but, I'm not sure. So the mayor signed it. So I still see city vehicles with no markings. What is, why is that?
Can you tell us?
The mayor assured me today that vehicles are being marked in the process, and they will be, continue to be marked as we go along in the very near future.
Do you know how long it will take to get them all marked? Can we say by the next council meeting we should be done?
We didn't want to incur more expense, so they're being done by the mechanic in the DPW.
Right.
Depends on his workload. And, so I don't want to give you a date. And then there, we'll give you a progress report at the end of the week.
Sure.
By the end of the week, a certain amount of vehicles will be completed, and we'll go from there. How's that sound?
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I have one more, one more comment. There's a house on 4201 Detroit Street. I went, visited the site a few weeks ago. I'm not sure who, who approved the CFO for that house, but that house looks pretty run-down, especially the garage in the back. I've seen rats crawling underneath the garage. It's kind of disturbing and disgusting, actually, to see that in the city of Dearborn Heights or any city.
What was the address?
4201 Detroit Street.
Yes, I've gotten several calls on that exact house, too. There seems to be a real issue with that, and I do understand that police have been called several times there, too.
You know anything about it?
Yeah, it's by Bob Ryan's house. I mean, Jack has been working, I don't know where he went, but he's working.
Okay, well, if he comes back, maybe he can answer us. Did he leave for the night or?
No.
Okay, gotcha. All right, any other discussion, from comments from council members?
I would have had, but there's a lot of things that were taken off the agenda, so I'm speechless right now. That's, mark that down on your calendar, folks, I'm speechless.
Madam Chair?
Mayor?
I'm still looking for a woman who would like to be members of the Women's Commission. I'm still at three, so please, if anybody's interested, contact my office.
Thank you. I see Director McIntyre has stepped back in. We had a question on an address at 4201 Detroit and the CFO for that address.
What's the address?
The 4201, it's, it's a pretty, it's in pretty bad shape. It's on Detroit Street.
And your, what is your question about it?
What's the status of the CFO on that? Is there any?
Well, I don't know them all, but if you give me a second, I can look it up real quick while I'm sitting here and if I...
This one has been very, this one I've gotten...
I just don't have them all memorized.
Okay.
But I've got a tablet here, I can look it up. If you can come back to me in a few minutes.
I sure can.
Okay.
Thanks. Any other comments? Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to let everybody know that the packets are available for city council positions that will be elected this year. This is also on the website. It's on the bulletin board outside our office. So you can pick up a packet if you're so interested. They're due back by Tuesday, April 23rd at 4:00 PM. Lot of things going on as far as elections. The legislature passed several bills at the end of their session that has to deal with elections and also the proposition that dealt with elections. So we're going to keep you abreast on this. I've added a few things to our website already. We're in the process of, with the new Secretary of State getting these issues deciphered. And as I say, I will keep you updated as we learn new procedures and how these laws are going to impact both the city and our voters. One of the things, however, is the passage of no reason absentee. So if you are so inclined, you can vote absentee with no reason. We maintain a permanent absentee list. If you want to be on a permanent absentee list, we have a form. It's right outside my office, it's available in a little plastic holder out there, it's on the website, you can get it from us. And what that does is that puts you on a list to receive an application for every election. Does not guarantee mailing a ballot. We don't mail you a ballot. But you will get an application for every election. You could fill it out, get your absentee ballot that way. This does not bind you to vote absentee every time. You can pick and choose. But if you want to guarantee yourself getting an absentee application for every election, this is the way to go, folks. The only other thing I want to say about elections, as I mentioned previously, we had, along with almost every community in Wayne County, we had a lot of problems with equipment. We're in the process of addressing that. It was a major and dramatic problem, to be perfectly honest. Wayne County is coming out on Thursday. I'll be talking to them, amongst some other things, about the equipment. We have the representative of Dominion to come out tomorrow to take some audit logs on three of our pieces of equipment that didn't perform well on the last election. I am actually pushing to have every piece of equipment that we have taken by them and overhauled and, and redone and reinvestigated. And those of you who worked the election, I see Richard here, know the difficulties we encountered. On that note, to finally, like I say, I don't know what kind of fixes we can, we can come by. I know Wayne County is dealing with the state, and also, all the clerks have asked for and are getting a special meeting in early February with the Wayne County officials and the equipment company to discuss all the issues we had with the equipment. So we'll keep you updated on that. And please keep looking at our website, because I'm, as I learn more and find out new and different procedures, they'll be on there. So thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a quick note and a quick thank you of appreciation. We had our first winter storm here a few days ago. It wasn't that bad, right? We survived it all, we're here. But with that being said, I want to thank DPW and their crews for being out and taking care of the streets and getting it all done. I'm sure they're preparing for the next one, which is on its way. But I also want to do a real quick shout of appreciation. We are, as a community, I love living here. I will tell you, our best resource would be our residents, without a doubt. And I have seen it time and time again, and I saw it this time, where we have people that are shoveling for their neighbors, they're snowblowing entire blocks, they are delivering food to people who cannot get food or are shut in. I have, there's a gentleman who is, with your car battery does not work, and he'll, call him up, he'll come jump it for you. And it doesn't ask for anything in return. And I think that is amazing, that is compassionate, and I just want to say thank you for doing that. That makes Dearborn Heights a really great place to live, because of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Conston?
And Clerk, thank you for the update regarding the elections. And just so everybody hears, I, did I hear you say May 23rd is the deadline for getting in the petitions?
23 April.
April. April 23rd.
There was some discussion that you hadn't let people know, the deadline for petitions and different things, so it's April 23rd.
Yeah, we just received the calendar from Wayne County, and we, we, anybody who asked questions, we were keeping them apprised. And Wayne County sent me some information just late last week to include in the packages, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion from the table? At this point, I'm going to open it up for announcements for the city.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry?
That particular property was, they scheduled, the owner came in and scheduled an inspection in December. The first inspection happened January 2nd, and so they'll have to schedule a follow-up once they get those things corrected there.
There's violations then?
Yeah.
Okay, when's the second follow-up supposed to be?
They haven't scheduled it yet. If it's vacant, they have six months.
It's not vacant, it's occupied.
Yep.
Definitely. The police know that address.
Perme?
The police know that address. They're there a lot, I understand.
Okay. Well, they, they have 30 days to get the inspections complete if it's occupied.
Okay.
There's also rats nesting under the garage.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty bad, the property. Have you been out there?
Yeah, well, I was out there last year. It was vacant for a long time, and there were some neighbors that were dumping poison on the property. I asked them to stop doing that because there were kids that lived close by. The rodents are not there because there's a food source there, at least they weren't when I was dealing with it last year. There was no garbage or anything on the property. What I found was the house directly behind a kitty corner had a dog, and they weren't picking up the feces there. So it's possible they were eating the feces there and then, you know, harboring at this empty property.
Gotcha.
But now that it's occupied, they'll have 30 days, which would mean they have till February 2nd to complete everything at the property. Otherwise, the owner would be issued a ticket.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
At this point, we're going to open it up to public comments, I mean, sorry, public announcements.
Hello, council chair and mayor. Just wanted to make a very quick programming note at the library. At Carolyn County Library from 7 to 8:30 PM, Monday, January 28th, we will be having a program on cutting the cord. Higher paying high bills for cable TV, learn how to cut the cord, and enjoy programming through streaming devices.
Yes.
That's all for now. Thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
Thank you. Any other public announcements? Okay, at this point, we're going to open it up to public comment. We ask that you step up to the microphones, state your name, address, and limit it to three minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Angela Venegas. I live on Dwight Street. I moved into Dearborn Heights about 19 years ago. I moved here because the city was clean, streetlights were lit, trees, we had trees trimmed all the time, the streets were swept every week, the roads were in excellent shape, storefronts, everything were beautiful. Come 19 years later, this city in the last 19 years has just dwindled, it's, it's gone down, it's bad. One of the biggest issues I have is at Riverside Middle School, the lights on Warren Avenue have been out for months. I've been to city council meetings, supposedly, they've been called upon. Monday, the 14th, I was on my way to work, I almost struck a young kid, no light. So when I got home from work on Monday, I called DTE. According to DTE, there was, there's never been a report filed of the streetlights being out. I've got a lady's name, a confirmation number, and the whole north side of Warren Avenue is out, almost between Beechdale and Incester. Well, I called back this Friday. There are some of the lights back working, there was a problem with one of the poles, and there's also damage underground. And they will be calling me on Wednesday to let me know when that's going to be fixed. I just want to know how streetlights stay out on Warren Avenue when the safety of our kids walking to school, back and forth, and nobody has checked on it. It's been months.
Madam Chair, may I address that, please?
Sure. I know, and I have record of it, every email that I sent, every phone conversation with our DTE government liaison, who has responded every time. Now, they had told, we already knew that there was problems with the wiring and the underground, because that's what they had told us, but then we were reassured as being taken care of. What I would like is to talk to you afterwards, get your phone number and your, that confirmation number, because then, I want to follow up on it again tomorrow and say, hey, I'm concerned, one, because you called, and I'm not doubting that at all, but if you called and they told you there was absolutely no correspondence, that is incorrect. I can, actually, before you leave, I'll show you my phone.
Okay. No, no, I'm just saying, that's what, she had nothing on record. She was going by addresses.
We've been addressing it since August, I believe.
Almost everybody's seen up here.
Well, Ms. Diggs has been out there already. She told me that Ms. Diggs was coming out there, and it's already marked.
That's, yeah.
So I just don't know how a resident makes a phone call and then stuff gets done. And it's being, the work is being done out of the Redford Station, is exactly what she told me.
Right.
But I have her name and a confirmation number. I talked to two different women.
Right, right.
And part of the streetlights are back on.
And if you don't mind when we're afterwards, if you don't mind giving me a minute of your time?
Mm-hmm.
So that way, you know, like I said, we can cross-reference and make sure. I'm glad it's getting done, but I know we've been addressing it since August, and we were told the same thing. And been, and like I said, I have the documentation to show, we were told the same thing. Same thing with Ms. Diggs coming out, same thing with all of that.
It's marked now, it's marked. I don't know if the snow covered it, but it's marked.
Which is good, which is good, so not arguing the point at all. Just want to work with you on this, okay?
Yep. And then I have another issue, and Officer Ortman did get back with me. It's the house that's on Cronin. Jack, you're very familiar with the house. My brother's been complaining for this house since 2007. For the last 10 years, that house has been vacant. Well, my brother has security cameras, and I understand they have a court order now that somebody's going to start, you guys are supposed, the city's supposed to come in and start cleaning up the house. And I understand the order's been since November. My brother's kitty corner from that house behind it. I have a picture of my brother's surveillance camera. His backyard is being used as a litter box. There's five cats at once in his backyard in the middle of the night. That's terrible. They shouldn't have to live like this. My brother's house is immaculate, and, you know, now he's got cat feces all over his yard. I mean, what can be done to speed up the process?
Director McIntyre, would you like to address that?
Yeah, so we did have an order. We went back and had the order adjusted, because we wanted to include not only removing the, the debris that's been there for a long time, but to clean the property. And then we wanted the order to include the removal of the animals that were there, to allow us to trap there, to remove the animals, so.
Okay, when are they going to start trying to trap the animals? My brother's put two live traps in his yard. He's trying to catch them, but, you know.
You know what, I can talk with Officer Ortman in the morning and have him follow up with you. I know he's, I actually gave him your email this morning, because I thought it would be a lot more direct for you to deal directly with him.
Well, he called me back, but I was sick last week, and I got his message. But it's just that a court order's been issued since November, still, there's nothing been cleaned up in the yard.
Yeah, so we weren't going to use the one that was issued in November. We went back in and got an amended order. That's, we did that because we wanted it to be all-inclusive, and the original order wasn't, so.
Okay.
But he'll definitely follow. I get daily calls that Officer Ortman is far too thorough, so trust me, he will be on this, and it's something that he wants to take care of as well.
The house is just a disaster.
Yeah, I agree.
Probably be, I don't know what the inside of it looks like. From the front, it looks beautiful. Whoever owns it is keeping up with the front of it, but the backyard is just terrible.
No, you guys have been very patient, so, but it's right there. We've got the amended order, and I'll talk to him tomorrow. We usually try to do those on Fridays. It's just easier staffing-wise, so.
Okay, and then, I have a question. Like, the Heights Mall, I mean, I took pictures. I don't know if you want to pass these down. That whole mall behind there is a disaster, and it's just not months. That has to be years of neglect. It's terrible.
You're talking about behind Krogers and
Oh, behind Krogers, the side of the building, behind it, the whole strip mall back there. I don't know who owns it and who's responsible for cleaning it, but it's horrible.
So, we do, I do regular, once a month, I meet with the owner, and we drive around the property, and he gets it tidied up for a few days, and then we get him back in again.
If you look at those pictures, that's not days of neglect or months of neglect.
It's an ongoing problem, because you can drive right next door to Target and drive entirely around Target, and you're not going to see the same thing. There's definitely an idea there that they don't have to keep, you know, Krogers was storing a lot of things behind there that they weren't supposed to be. There were staging things behind there. We had to have them correct that. They weren't having somebody on a regular basis clean up the parking lot. Hopefully, we've got them doing that now.
Well, that's what I don't understand. Even all the businesses up and down Ford and Warren Avenue, I used to run a Burger King, the one on Garland Drive in Dearborn Heights when I was a teenager, till I was in my thirties. The first thing we did in the morning was send somebody out in the
Oh, my God.
Parking lot and out in the front to clean it.
I totally remember you from that Burger King. That's so funny. No, I just, I've always wondered how, you always have looked familiar to me, and I literally remember being there. I used to work at the fruit and vegetable market at Joy and Evergreen, and we'd get off our ship and go over there for chicken sandwiches. I totally remember you now, so.
But no, I mean, all the storefronts, I mean, Citizens Bank, all of them. There's just litter and debris everywhere.
Yeah.
Something's got to be done. This city is, it looks terrible.
So, you know, you can, you can ask anybody that's in this room that's been around for a long time, it's been a challenge with that shopping center. For a long time, there wasn't enough lights there. We would constantly be calling him and his staff. There was a car accident that occurred in that strip mall, and it took a long time for him to get those things corrected. But one thing that we've done differently now, when we established the grease ordinance, is that I have one particular officer, and that's all he does, is address businesses. He's done a phenomenal job. He continues, and he's now, I passed the torch on to him. So he meets with the owner of the strip, of the whole shopping complex on a monthly basis, so. But I'll go out there myself, too. I mean, sometimes I need to do that.
Director, if I'm not mistaken, and I hope I'm wrong, but isn't that the same owner of that particular property, same owner as Somerset Mall?
He owns a lot of properties all over
Amongst them Somerset Mall?
And he's
The reason I'm asking is
I'm sure Somerset Mall doesn't look like that.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. Exactly what I'm saying. I mean, that's, he's up the floor there.
So, I mean, we even have the guy that sweeps the parking lot every morning. We've got his contact information. He'd like Krogers to stop even having those ads, because you could go to any Krogers, really, and you're going to see those crazy ads all over the parking lots, even the ones in Dearborn. I go to one in Livonia sometimes, near my son's house. But we've got his number, too, the guy that runs the machine every morning, you know, that sweeps the parking lot, so.
But I mean, he's got, the point I'm making is, obviously, he's got the resources, knowledge, and experience on how to run a bike ship.
And the money.
And the money.
It's when he's required to do it, yeah.
You know, and I'm not blaming you. It's not you. But I'm just saying, obviously, he's got the know-how, resources, money, A to Z, to do this at Somerset Mall. Then he should be doing it, he should have the same respect for ours.
As long as we keep the pressure on him, he usually typically keeps it up. But there is kind of, I will say, there's kind of a mindset in that particular strip. I mean, it's not just him that we have to talk to. We have to, once a business moves in, it's kind of that expression, birds of a feather flock together. It's like everyone. Everyone is having difficulty, you know, it seems like we're constantly over there telling people to maintain their dumpster areas, a lot of storing behind the stores and things. But I'll personally go there myself this week, Angie.
Thank you. Okay, one last one, and let's make it quick.
Director, one minute, please. Do we have any authority at the Heights Center for them to turn the lights on? All the lights are burned out for safety sakes. Plus, the, I don't believe, you know, Krogers now initiated pack and go. They took away a lot of the handicap parking spots.
Yeah, I just saw that.
And there's not enough parking spots now that the other Krogers have closed. People are shopping here. There's zero, I shouldn't say zero, because there are some, but not enough handicap spots. Plus, the shrubbery where you're coming in, in between Leo's and what's the other restaurant?
Applebee's.
Applebee's. The row of shrubbery there, you can't see oncoming traffic. You just can't see.
You're talking about in the parking lot islands?
Yeah. So, I've called and asked them about it. I have seen no movement.
I'll go out there myself tomorrow. I'll take
I mean, in the summertime, it's worse when it turns green.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
I had another question, since you're up here, Jack. What's the ordinance on people on raking their leaves? I mean, seriously, I mean, and all of a sudden, now the new norm in Dearborn Heights is let's take all of our leaves and put piles on our lawn so they blow so the rest of the neighbors, like me, who keep it clean, can clean up after them.
Well, piles is something I can enforce. Somebody just leaving them at one level and not raking them, I don't really want, you know, is difficult to enforce, because we don't have an ordinance that says that. We don't have an ordinance
Get one. We need to get one. The processes need to change, even how long it takes for the houses that are in disarray to, you know, and even like people, you have, and you know me, there's repeat offenders all the time. If somebody doesn't cut their grass one time, they should be given a warning ticket. When the ticket is brought in, something should be put on the back of that ticket that, once you sign this ticket, you're agreeing for the rest of the summer season, you're going to keep your grass cut. If not, we just automatically come in and fine you. If these people got good fines, they would take care of their property.
I've been saying that three years.
Yeah, similar to the property they were talking about earlier on Detroit Street, one of the issues that we have with some of the properties that take a while, if they're vacant properties especially, is that, you know, there's a tree that I'm trying to cut down on Glengarry, a fruit tree that just keeps dumping fruit and creating a rodent situation. But the owner passed away. There's, the house is also in the daughter's name. We cannot get any information on the daughter. I just learned today that she may work at Wyandotte Hospital, so I'm going to try that avenue. But, you know, I'm not going to be able to go and probably get a judge that's going to be willing to give me a court order to cut a tree down in a backyard of a house that's been, you know, that's not been occupied for like seven years. So we got to figure out other ways to kind of do it. What you just said, though, piles, is something that I can enforce, because piles will create a potential area for rodents to harbor underneath that pile. So then I can enforce that as a, you know.
It's through, I live in a square mile between Warren and Ford, between Beech and Inkster, and it's everywhere. It seems to be the new norm. And, I mean, I got pictures. Here's the snow. Leaf bags sitting out on the grass. Leaf collection ended months ago. People with bags out, cars that have been sitting in people's driveways with flat tires with throng plates. There's a house here on Norbourn that's being built. It's not gated off or anything. It's all open. That's a potential for kids to go in that house and, you know, things to happen. I just don't understand why there isn't more enforcement and why things aren't getting done.
Well, the specific examples you just gave, I'll make sure Officer Ortman follows up on those, for sure.
But it's, how many times do people have to call, and how many complaints do you have to make, and it just keeps happening and happening?
Can I tell you something? I'll be honest with you. When I started and took this job five years ago, I had that same question. I said, how is it that my job is coming in every day and wondering why things that I think are common sense, people aren't doing anymore?
But then the process needs to change. You guys need to do something else.
Well, this is the thing. We could hire fifty more enforcement officers, but you still, you've kind of said it yourself a couple times. There is kind of a different mentality now with people in terms of what they want for the properties that they live in. And so, it's become a challenge. It really has. I mean, you know, telling someone that it's normal for you to follow your dog outside, and when it uses the bathroom to pick up the feces, that's, it's surprising that that's something that you have to explain to people, but you do, so.
Okay, at this point, we're over our time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Because you keep going back and forth, and I, okay, anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. My name is John Gochi. My address is 20629 Wood Creek Boulevard, Northville, Michigan. I am here to announce that I'm doing an educational seminar at US 12 Bar &amp; Grill in Wayne on the MISTHA Step Forward Down Payment Loan Assistance Program, which is an amazing program. Your zip code here, 48125, is eligible for this program. It's, like I said, it's the best program I've ever seen. It is a federally funded program that was launched in October 2018 with $20 million for sixty-one zip codes. And by December, it was almost, you know, below 50 percent. And then they added another $5 million, and it's first come, first served. So I'm doing an educational seminar, and it's at US 12 Bar &amp; Grill in Wayne, Michigan, for anybody that would like to learn about the program. We'll have a qualified MISTHA-authorized lender there that can answer any question.
The date again, please, sometime?
US 12 Bar &amp; Grill in Wayne, Michigan. It'll be in their conference room.
Do you have a date?
It's February 6th at 6:30 p.m. with some appetizers and pizza. At 7:00 p.m., we will begin promptly with the presentation and answer any questions after the presentation. It's $15,000. They'll loan you interest-free, and it's forgivable in five years. Twenty percent goes away every year you own the house. And it's a, you know, neighborhood stabilization program. It's really good for those communities that have this program. It's great for homeowners. Just recently, it includes Garden City, you know, your area, Wayne, Inkster, Romulus, Southfield, and several other communities, sixty-one communities. It is a program that hopefully people will be able to participate in, and it's February 6th. And I'll give you my number, 734-637-1430, at 734-637-1430. I'd be glad to help anyone if they have something, question now, or if you'd like me to come talk to your, you know, community-based group, or church, or nonprofit organization.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments? Please step up to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Nada Piggy, and I live on Rosetta Street. A couple months ago, I was here probably talking about trees, and I tried to interject another subject, but time ran out, and so I'd like to make sure I talk about that. Being a licensed architect, I periodically have to attend continuing education classes. In fact, tomorrow, I have to attend the three-hour one. This was last year, a discussion of the Michigan Building Code. And I'm not sure whether, probably pertains now to the 2015 code. Much to my surprise, there was a discussion about side yard minimums. It seems as though Michigan is adopting a minimum five-foot side yard. Now, as I recall, here with our forty-foot lots, we have a 30 percent side yard requirement, usually with four feet on one side and eight on the other. We should have our planning consultant, Mr. Lamarcos Wade Trim, look into whether this has been adopted, whether it's in the new building code. And if it is, we'll have to change our ordinance accordingly, because if we have four-foot side yard requirements, you cannot have a window or a door in the face of that building. And I just want to bring that to your attention. And Mr. Lamarcos is our planner at Wade and Trim, and you should ask him to look into that matter. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Nick retired. So we have a new one, Chip.
Well, he, like me and his wife, are professional community planners as well, so I'm surprised, because you have to have one, or you used to have to have at least one in your firm. But look into that. Otherwise, we're going to be building buildings that have windows and doors and places they're not supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Name, address?
Zuhair Abdulha, Dearborn Heights. I have a couple subjects. You pulled out 8A. I was going to talk about it at the beginning. And our treasurer talked about the investment, and I didn't see anything about the PAG. And intermingling all these accounts will allow the residents to lose $1.4 million from the PAG program. I asked last time that there is money. I cannot locate it in the budget. And I thank you for scheduling study session, because I would love to hear where the 1.395 exactly million dollars from the PAG program was spent. If we spent $111,000 according to the mayor's assistant every year for the last ten years, that's $1.2 million. We don't have a camera worth $25,000. We don't have a chairs. We don't have a room. We don't have anything to show for the $1.2 million supposedly spent, according to them, not my number. Where was it spent? That's, I thank you again for that, and I hope you will follow up on it and see how we separate this money, so we do not allow the intermingling and some money which is supposed to go to one place to go someplace else. And we deprive the residents from, you know, having decent studio, decent, you know, facility. And I'm not against it. I am with you to spend the $890,000 on the studio, because we deserve it. We deserve it. We paid it. The second thing, you passed a resolution about the budget. You tracked back all the salaries for all the employees due to the $111 million liability for the retiree healthcare. I would like you to check, who are the employees who got increases in their salary behind your back? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Christina Lazlo on Charlesworth Street. I understand that city council has to take into account any residents or anybody that comes up and expresses their concerns. But I ask that city council, once people throw, not city council throwing allegations, but if a resident comes up and throws an allegation or an accusation, it seems to be resolved behind the scenes, where nobody comes up and says, you know what, this was presented to us, and guess what? It is on the up and up. So I just ask that city council, or maybe even the department head that's being attacked at whatever particular meeting, has the chance to come up at the next meeting and say, you know what, here's all the backup. And if we had that question then, we could have answered that question. And just with my name being thrown out there just now, I never said $111,000 for the past eleven years. It was for the last budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Move to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.